Call to order, roll call.
Mr. Almroth.
President.
Ms. Calhoun, here. Ms. DePacca.
President.
Ms. Goffin, here.
Here.
Mr. Lombardi. Mr. Luna.
Here.
Ms. Moore, presence. Vice President Dunn, here. President Goldman, here.
Please stand for the president.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Board of students, in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted in the Borough Hall in the New Milford Public Library. Notices have been sent to the record room between borough news. The board announces that under its long-standing policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings of the board are open to the public, and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the board, so all comments may be considered. The board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals who's getting. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked to not speak negatively or in derogatory manner about any employee of the board or any student. I'm going to start out with seeking a motion to approve the minutes for November 12th and November 18th. Please second. Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to start off with the New Milford High School Winter Course. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. Okay. We are small but mighty tonight because there's also orchestra rehearsal happening tonight. It's our concert season, so it gets a little crazy.
We can sit up there.
Thank you all for having us tonight as we are getting ready to celebrate this awesome holiday season. This Thursday is our instrumental winter concert, and next Thursday is our vocal winter concert. So a lot of our students are very spread thin this month, but we're very excited to spread this holiday cheer. We are going to present to you Carol the Bells tonight, which is a tradition here that we have in Milford High School. We sing this every winter concert, and so we wanted to give you something special here tonight. So thank you. Thank you. If you'd like to see some more, come on, join us next Thursday night at seven o'clock for our full vocal concerts, right starting with the choral ensemble. There'll be many more of them, I promise, and even more of our regular course. We have a lot of great repertoire for you guys. Happy holidays, thank you. Thank you guys for having us, thank you. Have a fabulous western routine. Thank you. Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, now we have our student board representative report, Emma Gray.
Good evening, everyone. I know that was kind of hard to follow the multi-margins. To start, I note that last time I was here, I talked about the hands leading up to the musical review, and since I'm just going to announce the divisionally won, which I'm very excited for, and sure everyone else is. Last week, the Future Health Club visited Berkeley Elementary School to discuss various medical careers and organize community activities. We presented to the fifth graders, and both the future health members and the students had a great time, learned about different careers and different fun we used to go along with it. This past Saturday was yet another successful holiday breakfast, possible because of the efforts of Ms. Bernardo every year. Student volunteers and community members alike had a great time, and it was nothing as exciting as Santa's police escort entrance and escort, sorry. They gave memorable morning for everyone involved. The winter sports season has kicked up in Milford High School, and our athletes are working hard to sleep at various meets. Varsity swim has a meet tonight, and girls varsity basketball has a scrimmage, so good luck today. Also this Saturday is the Democratic Wrestling Foundation Holiday Tournament in Gartville, so good luck. Tomorrow night, the high school has a band orchestra winter concert, which just then, and the following week they'll have the Chorus Ensemble Concert. After many zero period days and after school rehearsals, I highly recommend that you go to see their hard work up on stage. This Sunday is the Music Department Holiday Fee Market and Vendor Sale in the cafeteria. It will feature various holiday goodies, supplied by an area vendors and community members. And that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you. Do you want to have any questions?
Those things, the foundation, Wrestling Foundation tournaments here at the Milford. They might be playing, I think, whether maybe wrestling in Gartville, but our part of the tournament here. Yes, no, thank you. Thanks for representing.
Thank you. No, you don't have to stay, I know you're very busy.
Expect the next report you're going to be singing.
Time of schools report, Peter Bosso.
All right, since it's a work and regular session, I'm going to go over some items on the agenda first. Under Board Action, obviously approval of the November 2025 HIV report. I'm very happy. At Milford High School, there were two HIV 338 forms submitted. Both submissions were not investigated under principal determination, and what that means again is, a 338 form was filled out, the principal gets the 338 form, and if they consider everything true on the form, and it doesn't even come close to meeting criteria, it's handled as a code of conduct. And that's what happened in both these cases. It doesn't mean that nothing's investigated, it's just not an HIV, it's code of conduct. For DEO, Berkeley, and Gibbs, there were zero HIV 338 forms submitted. And again, that 338 form could be submitted by students, staff, or parents. Zero were submitted. BA 2526.26, a November 2025 suspension report. At Milford High School, there were two students suspended for a total of two days. One student served one day in school, one served out of school. DEO, there were three students suspended for a total of seven days. Three students served two days each of out-of-school suspension. One student served one day of in-school suspension. Berkeley and Gibbs, zero students were suspended. I know Mr. Dastian talked about educational program and curriculum, I just want to point out that I'd like to approve for sixth, tenth, and twelfth grade students to attend the ELCS Peer Leadership Conference at Ocean Place Resort and Spa Long Branch, under the guidance of Ms. Jaeger. This is a peer leadership conference that we do every single year. It focuses on healthy choices, especially regarding drugs, alcohol, mental health, and to build leadership amongst our students. They did a presentation for us last year, outstanding. So this is the ELCS, but it's also a partnership with the Milford Municipal Alliance, which would not be possible without them. So good luck when everybody comes together. So there's three institutions here, our district, the Alliance, and the ELCS, all working together to provide students an experience. Wonderful. Under Personnel, I just want to point out for Ms. Bioli, she will be paid through Title I allocations as an interventionist. So this year, with a lot of changes in national government, triggering to the state government, triggering down to the county, we all know that the type of funds, it was a long process getting them approved, and we are being kind of gently escorted into paying for interventionists, teachers, and hiring for the district. We're hiring a point six because we don't have to pay benefits, so otherwise that would soak up all the funds right there. So we have them allotted at both elementary schools, the middle school, and a couple at the high school. So it's still, it's advertised or?
It's because of China.
I'm sorry, not because of China. Under P 2526.54, I just want to point out we put NJFIL, which is the New Jersey Family Insurance Leave. So when teachers go out on leave, it's not as comp- it's more complicated than just a sick leave or leave replacement. Teachers can use ten days of sick days, and then fall into the MJFIL. So we're just doing that to help track it and make sense of it all. So it's just more apparent for everybody involved. P 2526.58, approval of job descriptions. So I'm asking for the approval of a teacher-in-charge job description. This will be for the elementary schools. So when a principal is out, you cannot have a VP to rotate back and forth anymore. So a teacher would be paid a little stipend to either step out of their classroom for their particular role and take the role of the principal. And this is not just a quasi teacher-in-charge where in case of emergency, has someone to go to. This is they are running the bill, they're managing the substitutes, they're managing discipline, they're treating parent phone calls. And we think this would be a great help to build capacity in future administrators and principals' work, so they can see behind the curtain, is this really for them, do they like this? But once you get into administration, you know, it's a little different from when you're, you know, talking to parents and dealing with some situations. So we think this is a great idea for our elementary schools. Don't visit, it hasn't been posted or anything yet. That will be dependent on approval of the job description. That is it for any items on the agenda that I'm asking for approval. If you need a reapplication, you know, first time please ask me. As for a district update, I'll go through this quickly. Today, we tested our emergency alert system, which we try to do every year before really snow sets in, and a blast gets sent out, so you get emailed, you get a text, or you maybe get a phone call. So if someone misses the message, it's not on us. Like, we're trying to make it, you know, as foolproof as possible. If someone did not receive all three alerts, please go onto Jensen, update your contacts. It also allows our system to see what gets bounced back. So if we have a family that all three got bounced back, we will know, and we can, you know, pump them down and relieve it, so there's no issues. Even this old drug alliance also sponsored a speaker at the high school that I really want to point out, Speaker Nathan Harmon. And I didn't hear him, I was in a meeting, but as I was walking down the hallway, I heard him speaking. Then afterwards, I was leaving my meeting, and multiple students stopped me and said, "Mr. Glasel, that was a great assembly." I was like, "Really, what was the name?" They knew his name, and you could tell they were touched by it. Furthermore, and this is what we want out of these types of presentations, we actually had a student email us after the presentation that night that he's going to make, they're going to make some life changes in terms of alcohol because of the speaker. And he brought some things to light that we didn't know, that parents didn't know, and so we know we affect their children. And so I thank the Alliance for having the speaker. The kids listened, they were well behaved, and it definitely touched them. And we had a real email that we could see, it's tangible. We know it helps, but when it's tangible, it's a wonderful feeling. So thank you. A lot of shopping going on at the season. We have the Holiday Boutique at the elementary schools where kids go in and purchase. Thank you for all the parent volunteers and their patience, because you have children that are six, seven years old, just presenting cash. It's good for them to count through it, but they buy little trinkets and they take them home. And every once in a while, you get a nice story where one student couldn't afford something, another student was like, "I got you," and we'll buy it for them. So all of that is very nice. We also, for Mrs. Zachard, did our buddy shopping where some of our special education students paired with our gen ed students, and they actually went to Frams Park Mall, and they shopped their families together. I actually stopped down with Mrs. Warren, and they were explaining all their gifts that they got. It was a wonderful time. I would like to congratulate Nathaniel Gamel, who is part of our Mandarin program. He actually won an award, the Youth Leadership Award by the NJCTA, which is the New Jersey Chinese Teachers Association. It takes Mandarin students and recognizes them for leadership, academic excellence, and community service. So he is getting a dinner in the ward. It's like in Edison, maybe? It's like an hour, hour, hour fifteen minutes away. Report cards are coming out for the elementary schools December 16th, so please be aware. High school report cards came out on November 21st. So if you have not seen report card, high school parents, DEO parents, please look them up. Update on sports and co-curricular. Winter sports, as Emma explained, are pretty much a season, in preseason right now. However, swimming started. They are one and one, and bowling started. And we do have a full bowling team, so massive amounts of people all year. We are up to eight kids, which is excellent. We need five to field a team, so everyone is very happy. We do have that, a really stud bowler, a female bowler bowled 220 the other day. So we're, yeah, she's a stud, so we're watching her, and the team is going to be great. I'm happy to report that in boys' basketball, we have three levels, freshman, sophomore, freshman JV, and varsity, which is excellent for a group one school. And even better, in girls, we have three levels as well. We have JV, varsity, and then like a sub varsity for freshmen, so it's mostly freshmen, and then some JV kids go down. But to have three levels in group one is phenomenal. I don't think there's another group one that has three levels, especially in growth basketball, so that is a great turnout. Winter track, on the other hand, when I talked to Mr. Riccadelli, I was like, "How many kids are on?" He's like, "Around a hundred." Wow. So that is doing very well. Wrestling has thirty-plus kids, middle school wrestling, fifteen kids, two kids for hockey. And swimming, we have about twenty of our own kids who would pull off the whole, so our numbers are pretty good for participation, we're very happy with it. I attended the Touchdown Club Dinner, with the mayor was there, of course, and Mr. Riccadelli. They are cheerleaders of football teams, a great event at Maggiano's, good food, good people. New Milford High School Fall Drama, the answer is distraction, oh, look a kitten. Also wonderful. I brought my whole family, all my kids, my mother, seventy-three years old, found it the most hilarious. We sat balcony front row, and it's just, it's funny. Like, the intergenerational things, like what she found funny, like my kids didn't find funny, vice versa. She loved the Tinder, if you saw it, the Tinder guy, she loved the Tinder guy. Not even about that, just like, I don't want to know this stuff. Last night, I was fortunate enough to attend the all-county one for Jake Johnson. So he was honored as an all-county defensive lineman. That is truly an honor. That is like the elite of the elite. There's a lot of non-publicature there. Mr. Stroud went. Also his parents, pulls him up, goes over stats. He has committed to Marist, I think, to play football as well, so he's in a great spot. I also want to say Kobe St. Helier transferred here in the middle of the year. The, I'm not disparaging him, but the young man from Hasbro Heights who got all-county, in my opinion, and of course, for a long time, Kobe St. Helier was much better and should have gotten it. And the only reason why he didn't was because he missed the first four games. He actually had sixteen hundred yards in, what, six games? And this other boy had sixteen hundred yards total for all those games. So listen, it is what it is, I get it, but I'm very excited about Kobe St. Helier. Well, he got second team all-county, I just want to throw that out there. But really proud of Jake Johnson, great kid, you know, great family, so I'm very happy. Also, good news. The Director of Athletics Association of New Jersey announced that Mr. Riccadelli got the sectional award of merit recipient representing the North One Section. So this is a prestigious honor presented annually to an athletic director who demonstrates outstanding achievement, dedication to students, professionals throughout their career. Recipients are selected by their colleagues in our Honored Association Annual Awards banquet. It's a great honor, it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing. And on top of that, the DAA NJ will provide a same recipient with one $500 scholarship to be awarded to a graduating senior. So I don't know if our kids would be positively affected as well. Upcoming events, as Emma said, the Milford High School Winter Band Orchestra Concert is tomorrow. DEO Winter Concert is December 17th. Milford High School Core Concert is December 18th. And then winter break is a half-day starting on 12/23. It is a long one, we don't return until January 5th. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Assistant Superintendent Report, Lauren Balzka.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few important things to know. So we're approving two additional students who are participating in option two. That is the alternative credit, forms of credit. They are for the first semester and quarter two. There was an oversight on getting them up for approval with the others. The students have been participating in these options, and we are streamlining our processes so that it aligns more with what we're doing for professional development, and that is an automated Google form. And then we'll go through a series of approvals, ultimately landing for approval by the board on one of the agendas. It's a busy time of year, so Mr. Glasel mentioned report cards, report cards are coming out, elementary report cards. Parents are going to see the revised standards on there, aligned with the new New Jersey student learning standards in the LA and math. Budget, we're programmatically closing out the 2526 school year, making sure everybody has what they need for the remainder of this year, and also thinking about next year, what departments might need to continue refining their courses, looking closely at the program of studies. Teachers are requesting new courses for next school year. Those should be appearing on the agenda in January, and then we'll be including them in student selections and seeing what we're going based on interest. One other thing that I wanted to mention, in addition, even though it's not under programs, but under personnel, we are approving the, it's P 2526.56 and 0.57. We're approving 0.55, I'm sorry, the extended day tutors, which are also Title I funded, elementary and middle school. And in addition, we're charging some of the elementary faculty members with science learning, where they're going to be engaging in digging a little bit deeper in science performance, looking at lesson development, and turning that over to their colleagues, the science team members. And I just wanted to mention, I've been spending a lot, I'm involved in spending a lot of time in classrooms with our observations, and just seeing, I think, with the, knowing the increased expectations on not only our students, but on our teachers, just seeing firsthand their creativity that our teachers are bringing work to their practice is really refreshing and most impressive. So just a note of gratitude to all of our faculty for really leading the kids where they're at and pushing them a little further, doing it in a really creative, exceptional way. And that is all I have tonight, and I'd like to wish everybody a happy holidays.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ron? Business Administrator Report, Stephanie Kuchar.
Good evening. So first, a few items on the agenda. F 2526.113, just so the board knows that these are not correspondents, but the reason that it appears on the agenda for your approval is a standing resolution is because it's above the bid threshold and it's being purchased off of a co-op. So it came out as an audit recommendation at the 2324 audit, that it wasn't approved, and so my response to the auditors was, "That's great, now everything will be on the agenda for approval." And because that's not something that we should have a repeat recommendation about. So that is 0.113. F 2526.114, I just think it's important for you to know that Mr. Roth is taking over the Holocaust program, and he's been working very hard on getting grants out there. He's applied to several, and this is, I believe, the first one that's been awarded. So we received that money, and it's going to go back to the students in the Holocaust program. F 2526.120 is, so this one is interesting because it's a three-year term, not a three-year contract. And so in the tech world, a lot of what Ron says is like very complicated to me and very challenging to understand. But because it's all subscription-based in the cloud, and I keep asking, is anything tangible? Like, I don't understand what we're doing and why I can't under, like, it just doesn't make sense. So this is being approved as a three-year term for, and everything is Cisco. That, but you can't buy Cisco, we're just, it's like crazy. So the vendor we have to buy from is Port 53, but it's a Cisco product. And then this one is 0.120, which is, sorry, Core BTS, which is another vendor who's selling us a Cisco product. This particular one is for the phone system, but I guess Cisco is so huge that different vendors are the ones who deal with the purchasing and selling of the product, and Cisco actually doesn't do it at all. So be that as it may, the reason that I wanted it on the agenda is because they're currently undergoing our audit, and they asked me about three purchase orders that were done last year, and the aggregate was over the bid threshold. So now I'm getting one step ahead of them, and it's over three years, but I just don't want them to have anything to come back and say to me, so now... So the aggregate is above the bid threshold, it's being purchased through a co-op. So I just want you all to be aware, this is what we're doing. And this locks us in for the pricing for three years, but it, because everything runs on a fiscal year, we can't enter into a long-term contract. So it's not, we're just locking into the pricing, and we're not signing the three-year contract. So that's why that one is a little bit confusing. The 2425 audit, we'll be wrapping up likely tomorrow, the fieldwork. So we're in the process of finalizing our recap of balances, which affects our 2627 budget. The recap of balances is in June, we're cast as a resolution to deposit monies into the various... The Board passes a resolution to deposit monies into the various reserve accounts. In June, the Board passed a resolution to deposit into two reserve accounts. One maintenance reserve, the other one capital reserve. And so, because of, the benefit of having the audit so late is that we are currently in the process of developing the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. It's really challenging when you're talking about three budget years. We're closing the twenty-four, twenty-five. We're in the twenty-five, twenty-six, and we're planning for the twenty-six, twenty-seven. So, this time of year, it's like, I don't know which budget you're talking about, but... So, because the audit happened so late, and we're in the process of the next year, it kind of gives us a chance to say how much can we afford to deposit into our reserves while still trying to maintain and balance the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. So, that's what we have to finalize tomorrow. And then, the auditor will likely present the audit in, at the January meeting. The NMEA Negotiations Committee. When the NMEA and the Board settled their contract, it was for a five-year, and so, two of the extra pay schedules are opening. So, we just have to, at the end of the meeting tonight, I just want everyone ready on negotiations. We got to nail down some dates, so we can get it back to them. And same thing, I think we're like pretty close on Finance and Facilities Committee. Whether it's the second or third Tuesday, let's just make sure we have that, so we can get that on the calendar. And then, the last item is the Board Calendar. I don't know if I've got it now or later.
I think I have it by now.
So, the proposed calendar that was included in the Board packet that you all received, we did receive several questions about it because historically, there was, there had always been two meetings a month. The shift has sort of been to go through committee. The Milford Board of Education has always worked on a committee structure, and the committees haven't really been doing so much work. But there's been a recent shift to have standing committee meetings. I mean, I guess, aside from negotiations, we have, it's like... You know, when there's like big things, but not like standing, but, yeah, we're clarified. Standing meetings that we may be able to work more efficiently, which is why, I know we have to move the July meeting date.
Yeah. Well, unless it does, I mean, have you guys looked at all the dates for next year? Okay. Maybe one more. I can show you my phone. It's a good idea. Because we have the next, I know we discussed the next meeting in January, but the Board Retreat was July twenty-second, I think, maybe it was. I don't know. It was the week. I think it's that week. And I know you're generally not around July. I'm not available that week. And so, I wanted to kind of fill out who was available, to see how many people can be there, or change in the date. That's the first thing. And then, also about having one meeting a month to be more efficient and be more effective. But also, that means if we're going to have one meeting a month, that, and there will be some meetings, some months where we will be two meetings, depending on what's going on. You know, making sure we ask our questions prior to meetings, having those discussions, so we're not coming here and then we're having this big discussion that we weren't all prepared for.
I also want the Board to be aware, when we typically, on the rework meeting in January, the list of dates are tentative dates. I advertise every month for the dates. So, these are just like the list of standing dates, but it's not the yearly advertisement. So, if we're in January and say in February, we need to have two meetings, we can have as many meetings or no meetings as we want. But this is like the standard of like which, where we know that we're definitely going to have a meeting. So, the July meeting?
What was it, July?
July twenty-second.
July twenty-second. So, I know it's like far out, like for some people, it's already, like, I already know my schedule type weeks off. So, if anyone, I guess, kind of look at it, we can get a hack. We might need to change the date. That's the point of that. And I don't know if it's going to be like earlier in July or later in July. That works for the majority of us. Is everyone okay with having one meeting a month? Yeah?
Yeah.
If it doesn't work, then we need to add one, like you said.
Well, that's how I felt. If we feel like it's not working, or we need to add a meeting to discuss things, because then we can have like four-hour marathon meetings, which we don't want either, then we can definitely consider two.
Well, that's the one, right. That's the one thing that I was a little concerned with, this four-hour meeting, right? Especially when something comes up and the public is here, because they want to ask a question, and we don't get to that for hours because the meeting runs long. But as long as we manage that, that's, that's fine.
I'm glad you brought that up too, because with the shift to go onto one meeting, we will have to have a standing closed session meeting prior to the meeting. So, I know some of you can get here for seven, can't get here for six-thirty. Do you want seven and a seven-thirty regular, or can we go to six-thirty and stay at the seven o'clock regular start? Because that's the new shift that we have to do.
Yeah, I'm not, I could probably be at like six forty-five, like, because I'm in traffic from work. I get out of work at six, so... But, you know, that's fine. I mean, anytime it's like closed, I can go. Dates for next year are not on the calendar yet, right?
No, because they're not approved yet. They're in the reports and ledger folder for December.
Oh, no, no, no. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to shift to the six-thirty start for close?
Yes.
Okay. And then, does, is July fifteenth, I thought the time was right, we need to get through? Because I know, are we still keeping with July as the retreat? Because that's the Board Goals. Because Lauren, when is the stuff due in county?
It's been later and later. I actually believe that SOA was due in September. I feel like it was September this year. So, we did it, I think, in August, we approved?
Yeah.
So, that should be fine.
Because the July meeting has typically been the retreat, so it, and it's always, we've always tried to keep it in the earlier part of July for that reason.
I'd only add, though, if we, the date that we pick, I kind of would like to see if everyone can be there, only because, you know, we were going for Board Certification, and we didn't, because things were not completed and not everyone attended. So, we need full attendance to get the, I know we're not at that point anymore, but it does affect how we, when we don't have everyone at a retreats. So, if we can pick a date and we know we can all be there, I think that's really key to this too. So, July fifteenth, like, we'll throw it out there. You can always email afterwards. If that works for everyone, it does work for me. But if it works for everyone else too, that would be great.
Is that a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, any Wednesday's fine for me. So, whatever the, on Wednesday's, okay.
I mean, some people don't know there's, I mean, I know not many people, we don't have their schedule, but I agree, no mind. So, just look at your schedules to see if that works.
This year is actually due October thirteenth, so it's been, it's been later.
Okay.
So, anytime is fine.
Okay. That works. Okay. So, I think we're good on that.
Are there any other dates that like you know don't work off this?
From that thing? I didn't have any there. I saw it didn't work. I don't know. I know some people have it all dated, but you guys can look at it, just so for future, for scheduling.
Because it will be on the January rework, and then we can, we've got the dates out there. Do you think?
The reorg, or zone where he ain't, I think, but, the reorg, yeah.
Stephanie won't be here either. So, we just need to know where everyone else can come to. Stephanie just wants to hear me. Who's going to, who is? Me, John, Andrew.
So, those three definitely have to be here.
Yes. So, please let us know if you have a sample, January sixth, and get back to us on that. Because that's right now, that's our next meeting.
I should, I should. January what?
Six. What time is your meeting? We do six.
I mean, it's, I'm not using. We could do the seven. I mean, I can do that. It's fine. I can all the fun.
Can I ask a question about the proposed ten to fourteen dates?
Yeah.
Dr. Kuchar, some of these weeks are relatively close to each other. Does that cause a problem for finance and monthly reports and things like that? I mean, we're, Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, Wednesday, September nineteenth, Wednesday, October fourteenth. You know, it seems like that August, September, but sometimes we're out because you get to start a year. That seems kind of close to each other.
We purposely did that for hiring. When we have, for bills list payments, when we have meetings that close, we typically have a large bills list in one of the months in anticipation. And we know, we, we get the monthlies and like the PSENG, all the utilities, in advance of those meetings, we don't run into problems. But yes, but that's why September is the way it is. And August, we tried to push late for the hiring reasons.
Do we think that in the, we know our schedule, but do we think we might need another meeting during the budget season?
Yeah, we're going to add one likely in March.
So, there'd be a true work session where we present your question? Thank you.
I don't remember the election calendar this past year was linked. Like, I don't think we adopted the budget until like the first week in May.
Definitely. Where we're going now is really obvious.
It's right. So, I don't, so it's like, it's a little bit hard. And usually, when we have a work or a regular, depending on when the election calendar comes out, that's usually when we determine if we have to take action on the work session, because we miss it. So, the work session would likely be the Monday, I mean, the Wednesday before, so whatever March twenty-fifth. But I will send that out with the change.
So, if we're going to move forward with possibly one meeting, maybe two meetings a month, and we're really focusing on the committees being a part of that, we need to have the committee reports really in a timely manner, so all of us can read it, because it will be a smaller time to review it.
So, what's the expectation there that you have on that the committees meet on a alternate day, or they're going to meet earlier in the day before that meeting?
That depends on the committee. It's whatever works for the group.
But we want to meet.
Well, we'd hope it wouldn't be the same day unless something comes up, because we wouldn't be able to know. We can't report out.
Yeah, we want at least, you know, a day before the meeting, so folks can digest that.
Right.
And get it out, especially because we're all open meetings.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we leaving the January sixth, or does the seventh work better for everyone for the reorg?
Seventh or Wednesday?
Yes.
That's hard for me, but, no.
I didn't, I mean, so are you picking one on the seventh?
I'm picking the double.
Okay, so that can get you out. Well, we need, so we need John here. John here, so let me know when Lauren wants here.
The sixth ain't a different.
Okay, okay. Okay, so just keep that.
That concludes my report.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions outside of what we discussed? Okay, perfect.
I have a question. I'm like just Stephanie there complaining about buying a lab. I was already press a part of your report. I'm still slightly confused by it. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, any liaison board committee reports?
The Policy Committee been on December first, and we have an assortment of policies and regulations up to night's first reading. Some of them are cleaning up some older policies, but the newer items concern resource material, library material, and public complaints. And that's all, most of it's in response to a new law called the Freedom to Read Law. Mr. Glasel, you want to jump in on that?
Sure. So, basically, everything trickles down to the public. So, whatever's happening nationwide will trickle down to statewide, and then eventually to all the public. So, the state is very concerned about material in libraries and in classrooms. Parent objections basically being made, and then, okay, we're going to end that material just like that. So, they have redefined policy and regulation through Strauss estimate to really make it clear the steps in order to do so. So, they took library material completely out of classroom material and made a separate policy and regulation for that. Classroom materials are defined in the same revised, though, policy and regulation. And then, all the grievances fall under a policy that had been in existence, and they just revise that. So, basically, if someone has a complaint against material, they bring it to the principal, and to the superintendent, and we put together a committee, and the committee has to decide, you know, is this appropriate or is this not appropriate? They did it as just, I think, a protection with New Jersey's DEI curriculum and everything else. And it's become really hard to navigate, I'll be honest with you. There was just a Supreme Court decision, Mu mod or Ma mod versus Taylor down in Maryland, I believe, where a parent of elementary school tried to opt out of curriculum in their regular class. So, parents in New Jersey can opt out or choose to opt their child out of PE and health curriculum when they talk about, you know, sex ed and all that stuff. They can choose to opt out. It's no problem. We get an alternate something for them. They don't sit through. Done. No parent has typically been able to opt out of in-classroom instruction. Because think about how hard that would be to, 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 this new Supreme Court case found that the school district violated the parent, parent's right in exposing the child to this in the classroom and did not give them a chance to opt out. So, it's kind of put everything in turmoil now as this kind of figures itself out. I know to prepare for this, Ms. O'Daska did a great job at taking all the curriculum and putting it online and making it accessible to parents. So, in the end, they can see what we're teaching in the classrooms, and they can see if they want to opt out in advance. And if they try to opt out, the New Jersey Strauss estimate, I went on a web conference called that, they're like, call your order, and then start figuring this out, because it's kind of in limbo right now. Could it happen in Maryland? There's probably going to be an appeal, but it's very strange. So, it all stems from that, and the Freedom to Read Act is kind of like in response to everything that's happening. Right, Tony?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's basically my report as far as that committee goes.
Any other committee reports? I know we received some correspondence. Is that the only correspondence today?
It is. It's to send the holiday cards from the DEO IDC program.
Very nice. Okay. I seek a motion to open to the public for items on the agenda as outlined in Milford Board of Education law zero-one-six-seven. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. I seek a motion. Stephanie, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions about our agenda? Okay, I seek a motion to close to the public. Tony, seconded by Nicole. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board action. I seek a motion for BA twenty-five dash twenty-six, point twenty-five, point twenty-six, point twenty-seven, point twenty-eight, point twenty-nine. Need a second? Nicole, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Educational programs and support for our community, Stephanie Colton. Make motion to seek approval for C twenty-five dash twenty-six, point twenty-four, point twenty-five, point twenty-six, and point twenty-seven. Need a second? Andrew, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, personnel, having the recommendation of the superintendent, I seek approval. I seek a motion for P twenty-five dash twenty-six, point fifty-two, point fifty-three, point fifty-four, point fifty-five, point fifty-six, point fifty-seven, point fifty-eight, point fifty-nine, point sixty. Need a second? John, hold on. Ms. Alro?
Yes.
Ms. Kelber?
Yes.
Ms. Rikasta?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Vice President Gunn?
Yes.
President Gollum?
Yes.
Okay, Finance and Facilities Committee, Cheryl Kellerman.
Having the recommendation of the superintendent, I seek a motion for the approval of S twenty-five dash twenty-six, point one-zero-two, one-zero-three, one-zero-four, one-zero-five, one-zero-six, one-zero-seven, one-zero-eight, one-zero-nine, one-ten, one-eleven, one-twelve, one-thirteen, one-fourteen, one-fifteen, one-sixteen, one-seventeen, one-eighteen, one-nineteen, and one-twenty.
Need a second? Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Policy Committee, Anthony Alro?
Having the recommendation of the superintendent, I wish to approve the policy of twenty-five dash twenty-six, point five. I need a second.
Need a second? Cheryl, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any old business? Any new business? Any board member request for additional information? Okay, I seek a motion to open to public as outlined in Milford Board of Education law zero-one-six-seven. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Any motion? Stephanie, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Does anyone from the public like to say anything? Counselor? Councilman?
Happy holidays, great to see everybody. Sorry I was unable to attend your last meeting, we had our conference, and I was away, but I wish everyone a happy holiday. And I want to again thank the district for its continued partnership, and support its continued partnership with the borough. At the end of fall, we were very busy and very successful. Both the domestic violence awareness symposium and the ADAM event were well-attended and very impactful on our community. And we take great pride in the fact that we come together as a community to put together programs that help families. I thank this board and the district for your partnership for our symposium. For anybody who missed the domestic violence symposium, still wants to watch it, it remains accessible on the School District's YouTube channel, and I encourage you to watch and listen. I also have to give credit to our municipal alliance, who was mentioned earlier tonight, and in particular, Mr. Joe Loon, for both your leadership in helping to create and organize the ADAM event from its inception and each year since. Thank you. Congratulations on a great holiday breakfast, which was tremendous, and thank you as well for helping the borough and helping our entire community, both with our emergency food drive and with subsequent, subsequent food drives that we have had throughout this holiday season. As everyone's aware, we had both the holiday tree lighting and nativity lighting last week, and concurrent with both lightings, we also helped accommodate food drive as well. Coming up this Sunday, December 14th at 6:00 PM, at Borough Hall will be our menorah lighting, and we encourage those in our community to attend that as well. I also had the privilege of watching the school play, Oh, It's a Kitten, I thought it was great, my daughter really enjoyed it. Great job to everyone who put that together, and great job to, of course, our kids, who did a great job. And I also have to get, again, give special thanks to Mr. Dan Pre, who not only does a tremendous job with your school programs and your plays and musicals, but without whose technical assistance, our symposium would not even be possible. I want to wish everyone a happy holiday and a happy new year, and we look, we look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I seek a motion to close to the public. Stephanie, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we're going into school session. It's hereby moved that the Board of Education adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provisions of section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter 231 PL, for the purpose of discussion and consideration of matters pertaining to the following subject, personnel and student matter. The minutes of the executive session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I need to seek a motion to go into close. Joe, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?